We'll call the June first, twenty twenty Rockingham School District Meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Mr. Benson like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
Certainly, if you can hear me. We have our flag. Pledge allegiance. Had a little bit of lag there.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Priscilla?
Yes, I'd like to add on the Rockingham Audit Update on that, please.
Okay. Chris, can we get that underneath Superintendent Reports? So that will be seven A two. Any other adjustments? Review and approve the board minutes for May eighteenth, twenty twenty. Everyone had a chance to read those? Any discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve them. Priscilla?
I was just gonna say, I think they're close enough from my opinion.
Motion to approve them as we have them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting. I don't have the date right now.
February eight or February. May eighteenth.
Of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty. So I have a second.
I don't need, we do the small board, so I don't really need a second. Chris, do you know if they got up on the?
What's that, Rick?
Do you know where the minutes are?
They should be if you go and see the site, Rockingham Board.
Okay, I found them. Sorry. Okay, all in favor of the mittens as written? Priscilla? Jason Benson? Jason Terry? George, are you with us yet? The eyes have it. Minutes are accepted as written. Comment and public comments. Do we have any communications or public comments? I see Chris's lips moving, but I don't think he's saying yes.
I don't see anything in the chat field.
Okay. Policies.
None at this time.
Reports Superintendent Central Office Staff.
All right. Let me start off by some of just some of the stuff that most recently by the governor. As you all know, so far he's extended the emergency until June fifteenth. He also increased, let me just let that person in. He's also increased the group sizes from ten to twenty-five. We've gotten guidance from the CDC for summer programs, but that's for private programs such as the YMCA and stuff. That's really not guidance for school, public school programs. Right now, the we're trying to put out a poll to see what the interest is for parents in the summer programs and the extended school year. Because I know a lot of parents would just want to break from the all the online learning and stuff. And so before we start offering the summer programs, it would be through, you know, virtual like we're doing now, we want to get an idea of how many people would actually be interested in more of the, you know, after-school, summer camp kind of stuff. So waiting to get feedback right back. Let's see. I applied to Secretary of Education last week to see if we get our rest of our snow days waived and asked to be have the last day of school beyond June twelfth rather than seventeenth. I have not yet heard back from Secretary French in regards to that request. All I do know is that for the most part, superintendents who have been making those requests have been getting them approved. I already put one in a while ago and it was approved for have those two days that we had school closed because of the COVID situation. So those were waived. And so I put in a second waiver to get the full snow days approved as well. Soon as soon as I hear that, if I hear that, I'm very optimistic that he'll approve. The last day would be June twelfth rather than the seventeenth. That would be the last day for students. And if we do get it approved, the last student day, like I said, would be the twelfth, but teachers would remain on so we can start preparing for next year and some end of the year professional development. Taking into consideration that if it's approved and kids are let out early, we do have a lot of employees who have kids at home. And I would, you know, what I've said is that all they would need to do is send me an email saying that under the circumstances now that their kids are home, they will not be able to participate in the professional development beyond the twelfth. So I'm trying to accommodate parents and parents who are also teachers. So I can talk a little bit of the, Teresa's with us tonight, so she might be able to chime in a little bit in regards to the audit. But my last correspondence I had from Miranda McDonald, who was part of RHR Smith, when we spoke is that the fixed assets backup documentation for Rockingham and the WNESU and BUA in Bellas Falls Union High School, along with some journal entry accounts and assessment reconsiderations that were done. So it seems to me from my correspondence is that as soon as the internal journal entries are done, she's going to go through and review those. And she's hoping to have them, I think those are all done. She was working on them last week. So if everything goes well, it's my understanding that we should get some kind of draft report within the the next two weeks. I'll be emailing Miranda tomorrow to get an update. I've also requested for a letter that I'll be sending them requesting, you know, what actually was holding up the audit this year beyond the e-finance that we know about. Were there any other circumstances, concerns they have that I in the board should be aware of in regards to the audit? So based on my most recent correspondence with Miranda McDonald from RHR Smith, it seems like we're getting closer to wrapping up the eighteen nineteen audit as late as it is. I don't know if Teresa, if there, if you wanted to add to that at all? She's on. Right now her audio is not working, so. So that's where we are in regards to the audit as of, I'll have more information this week and by the end of next week. And hopefully we'll get a, we'll get a draft soon. And right now, also in addition to the audit, as I put out a survey today to all parents. It's posted on our website, it was sent to them through an email and also it's on the Facebook page for Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union. Get a little information in regards to how is it currently going? What are their concerns? If we do Scott school backup in the fall? So I tried to hit on as many different things as possible from what we can do to support them. What would it be an impact on them if they school was not opened in the fall? What are they concerned about? Another question, some of the other questions revolve around. Would you send your, if school is open in the fall, are you planning on sending your your child back to school? Or if not, you know, what are your, what are your options? Are you going to homeschool? It's very important that we need to develop a plan and also continue to work with the parents and the students during this uncertainty of trying to navigate what the fall is going to look like when we don't even know if it's opening yet. So hopefully between this information and the information I'm gathering from all the school task forces around opening those questions there will help us come up with a plan if the state doesn't give us one for the fall and what it looks like. But as of today, we have not heard whether or not the, what the plan is for school opening in the fall or not. So that's all I have for now. I'm open up to questions.
Chris, I got a question. First off, sorry for my tardiness, folks. I did note, look at the the survey briefly. I didn't make it all the way to the end, so maybe that's the answer to my question. Some of them, the questions didn't have a straightforward answer to select. Is there, at the end, was there a place to, you know, state, is any notes or you know, questions to the questions?
Not, not, not at this point, but it's not going to be the last one. I think once I get more information out, once I gather this information, it'll help me get more specific with the questions. The questions that I sent are very general, open, broad questions. I was hoping that this could kind of narrow it down in regards to what the concerns, it's really about what the concerns have and the anxieties that parents have about when and if we go back to school. But every follow-up.
So if there's a question that doesn't have a direct answer for so if I am answering a question and I don't have a direct answer for one of the selections, would I just, or anybody for that matter, would they just leave it blank?
Yeah, you can write NA, or if you feel that there's something you want to, there are, there are some different, some questions have different comment box. You could, if, you know, if you, if you wanted to, you could just put, you could say, you know, I do have this question, this is what it is. And you can put it on one of those comment boxes and, you know, I'll get it that way.
Okay. I left some of them blank.
Yeah, and you know, I can go in and I can add a comment box at the end for any other stuff.
Priscilla?
I didn't see those. Is there someplace that I can find that survey? I'm assuming it went to parents, but I, I just would like to see it.
I can forward it to you right now.
Went to, went to parent.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
It went to parents, but I also put it on the school website and on the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Facebook site. So if you click on the website actually, it'll just pop up. And you can click on it or you can scroll down and it's right next to where you can log in for a board meeting. So you can, you can participate if you want and just be some areas you might not be able to answer, so.
Jason Terry?
Basically just wanted to see it. Thank you.
Jason?
Mr. Pratt, thank you for doing that. I think that's a really good idea with the survey. And will we be able to see the results, like how many people took it and then percentages of like how many answered whatever to question one or seven or whatever? Will we be able to see that information?
Yeah, I will be able to see all that information. It'll be put into different data tables. I will not be able to see who actually gave the response because I wanted to keep that anonymous. It'll, it'll combine all the different questions together and what the popular answers were. And that's something I would like to share with the boards as soon as it comes in.
I think it's great. Good job.
Did you get, so audit updates? Any other questions for Mr. Pratt? Priscilla, did you see, I see your hand up?
Sorry, I think I just was up to my, up to my face. I did have a couple of questions on the warrant, but I don't know when I can ask those.
On the warrant?
Yeah, the last one. One of that was easy probably for him to answer.
Now is as good a time as that? Well, let's wait till the business office and the financial.
That's what I thought.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the principals. We'll start with who's for Ms. Bukowski, you are first in line today.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I will start out answering a inquiry from Mr. Pratt. He asked us to speak at the board meetings about how learning is being assessed. Instruction on a regular basis. So first of all, I can start by saying that Mr. Quadro and myself spend most of the instructional time popping into classes where we can see what the teachers are doing. Some of the student engagement, et cetera. We don't stay long. You know, maybe two, three, five minutes, kind of depends on what's going on in the lesson. Sometimes we're asked questions by the students, also ourselves that we answer. Or we're kind of added into the culture of the classroom. It just kind of depends on the situation. Excuse me. Our students, or excuse me, our teachers are using an awful lot of instructional tools and interactive websites that they've discovered and have found through their networking with their peers, possibly inside and outside of WNESU. Students have become adept at using the chat box, the emoticons and the mute features for participating during instruction, such as asking questions via the chat box, explaining their thinking, offering opinions, there's journaling that goes on. All of those are ways to show understanding during the course of instruction. Additionally, formative assessment tools such as Kahoot, Quizlet, Brain Pop are used. Google Documents, exams are sent to the students through Google Classroom for summative assessments. Students also have the chance to meet with their teachers one-to-one during office hours for additional help and to clarify things. The administration meets with all the instructional teams weekly. It serves as a verbal check-in time where specific student concerns or other concerns are also addressed. Last week, Google meets pushed through an update and it caught some of us a little confused because it changed some things and didn't necessarily roll out flawlessly. So those were some questions we answered during that time and also sometimes popping into a classroom. Mr. Quadro and myself were able to do some troubleshooting. We continue to have the snack and chats at noon on Thursday with our teachers and paras, anybody who wants to attend. They're informal optional meetings where they can brainstorm, share practices and instructional strategies, different things that they have found to be successful for e-learning. So that are some of the many ways that we are able to monitor student engagement and assess instruction and how our students are doing. Of course, it's not the same as when we were in school. It's very different. Teachers can't circulate the classroom to monitor and look over a student's shoulder to see the work that they're doing and offer that on-the-spot adjustments. Those are things that they definitely miss. It's something that I miss, walking through classrooms and being able to walk around and look over students' shoulders and see how they're doing. Any questions on that before I kind of go into a few of the other things happening? Yes, George? I can't hear you, George.
Sorry about that. So didn't feel like I really got an answer as to how we're going to gauge the students. I mean, I got an idea of how you're gauging the classroom and this is going to go for all principals really, but how are we going to measure whether kids are making it or not making it? Is it based on just turning in of work or? I know it's kind of hard to do assessment testing and I hate testing, so I don't, please don't get me wrong, I'm not encouraging that. How are we going to gauge where our students are at on all levels, IEPs, standard learning through this type of learning?
That's an excellent question, and I think that's one of the things that is certainly in progress. Our teachers are choosing two to three of the proficiencies that they are focusing on and they're gauging the student's achievement on those two to three proficiencies depending on the subject that they're teaching. But in turn, you know, we would have given map testing probably a couple of weeks ago, which would have been able to show us student growth over the course of the school year and proficiency. That's not something that's available to us now. And so teachers are doing some project-based learning. They can give summative, you know, they can give tests via Google Classroom and the students can turn them in that way. But it's not the same, you know, it's different. So in terms where our students are at, I will tell you with confidence right now that our students today are not where we would have liked them to be at. Because, and I don't think any principal or any teacher could tell you that the students have the same level of achievement at this point in the school year that they did under the normal conditions. And I think that's something we need to continue to evaluate. You know, we know there's the COVID slide that's going to take place and that is taking place. And I think it's important that we acknowledge it and that we continue to support our teachers and our parents and everybody who are doing the best that they can in this circumstance.
Thank you.
I don't have the chat box tonight. I'm not sure why, but I was going to put a link up to Mr. Rumble's Memorial Day band performance, which was virtual for God Bless America. You can find that though on our Facebook page, on our website. And I encourage you to go there. They did a great job. You can see the students from their different locations and how Mr. Rumble was able to guide them through that. That was really powerful. And we showed it at all of our Terrier, all, all Terrier meetings on Friday, the Friday before Memorial Day. Our ADA is holding around ninety percent through last Friday. And we have not experienced a drop in our attendance. I was fearful with the weather being nice last week that we would start to see that drop. And we have not. That is encouraging to me. Finalizing plans for moving up, which will be Monday, June fifteenth, so I won't be at our next school board meeting. And I don't think Jason Terry will be either. And now that Governor Scott has increased the gathering size to twenty-five, we're going to allow our students back into the building to retrieve items. I sent an email out to the parents today about the restrictions on that and how we are handling that. And then we're moving forward with our end of the year celebratory parade. And we had our second opening task force meeting today and our discussion centered on PPE, trying to make sure we're going to have what is necessary. Big discussion on addressing the social and emotional needs of our students and the staff. And continuing to kind of exchange ideas, thoughts and brainstorm ideas for hybrid learning.
Karen, can you tell them what PPE stands for?
Sure, Personal Protective Equipment. And then our guidance counselors did send an email out to teachers in that with suggestions and thoughts on how to address any students who may have been affected and concerns and reactions that they may have after seeing some of the riots that took place in so many of our cities this weekend. That's my report. Yes, Jason?
Karen, I had a question. There was an email you sent out about an hour ago from a student who was, who did something for teacher appreciation. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that?
Don't want to because I didn't want to ruin the surprise for my teachers. So no, I'm going to leave it at that. Sorry.
I'm sorry, that, I'll just shut up. Thank you.
Priscilla?
I was wondering if the last day is going to be changed to the twelfth. Karen, do we still want to have moving update on the fifteenth?
Yes, because we've had to reserve that space at the high school and Superintendent Pratt told us that all end of the year celebrations would remain on the dates as scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bukowski? Ms. Hazard, you are up next.
Hello, everyone. Let's see, I'll start off the same way that Karen did. So as far as assessing teaching and learning, I too have access to all the Google Classrooms and able to and I'm able to see lessons and assignments and also student work that they turned in on an ongoing basis. In addition, I attend morning meetings each morning and meet with teachers both individually and as teams regularly. As far as how teachers assess, they've been assessing turned in work. We distributed whiteboards with our last packet distribution. And so during morning meetings, questions may be asked and students show their work that way. As well, they, this week and next, will be assessing one-to-one, having one-to-one meetings with students. And they, many of them have been doing this all along anyway, to assess identified critical indicators. And let's see, in addition to the morning meeting check-ins, works, work that's been submitted or turned in through the classroom, as well as, you know, some, some work parents actually take pictures of or students take pictures of themselves and submit that way too. So that's how we are assessing. I will say that our paras, and I think Keith reported out on this last time, but our paras continue to attend morning meetings. They also do a lot of one-to-one and small group instructional support. They attend weekly and staff team meetings and they consult and collaborate with teachers prior to the one-to-one and small group sessions. And they have been all actively engaged in professional learning opportunities that our student services team has put together as well. Two of our pairs help out with meal distribution. Let's see. We met as a task force for the first time on May twenty-sixth to generate a list of questions, given various scenarios that Chris mentioned. And we sent our list of questions to Chris. We do not have another meeting scheduled. That was waiting until after administrative team meeting on Wednesday to do so. Last week, we also held an incoming kindergarten family Zoom meeting. It was super fun, although quite different than what we usually do. We did have five families participate and it was very engaging. We created a video to share of our school and each staff member did an introduction and a welcome. So that was nice. And I sent that out to all families, whether they could attend or not attend. In addition, I've surveyed each of our families with regard to summer online tutoring as well as our online kindergarten scam camp. So, and that was just Friday. So those, those survey results are just coming in at this point. But I imagine much like Chris had mentioned earlier, that the the interest is going to be much lower than in past years. Details are coming together for a move-up ceremony for our fourth graders, trying to make that special. And again, that'll be on Tuesday, the ninth. And our summer send-off reverse parade will be on Friday, the twelfth. Met with Jason Benson on May nineteenth to go over the CIP, our CIP. And we had our first Fountains and Penel Classroom Zoom Training with Janie and NBT Literacy Consultant and Literacy Coach for our SU. And we have a second training scheduled for June eighth as well as two full days with Lesley University towards the end of the school year. We've scheduled Endwell Staff Debrief Meetings for this week and next week in small groups. And it's part of Dave Melnick's work, Endwell, Plan Well, Begin Well. And so our school counselor and Jen Hybrink will be facilitating those small meetings with staff just to kind of debrief how things have, how things have been going since dismissal. We posted, George, I'm sure you saw it, but we had students send in hearts for hope. We try to do something each week, but this one was really touching. It actually made me cry. We had students send in hearts for hope pictures and a slideshow was created. It's very moving. And I just want to formally say a big thank you to our families for their continued support. They've really stuck with it. And we appreciate all their investments and hard work. Any questions? Priscilla?
Unmute first. Is, can you share that slideshow with us so that we can see it?
Sure, yeah.
I think that would be great for the board to see, that you've got a couple people that have seen it, but the rest of us.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, I'll go. If you take a little bit of Karen's report and a little bit of Laura's report and mash them together, you got mine. Our attendance has dipped a bit. We're down to, on average, about eighty-four percent ADA. Not, not surprising when you're talking about such young children trying to stick with it, especially last week when it got, when it got hot. Let's see. We're expecting a delivery of free books from the Children's Literacy Foundation. They'll be coming hopefully in the next day or two, and we're gonna distribute those at the end of the year when we hand out report cards. We're gonna have an all-school dance party this Thursday morning, which will be led by our phys ed teacher, Peter Lowry. And we hope to get the whole school into one big online meeting. We gotta work out some technical glitches, but I think we can make it happen. Fourth grade is gonna have their end of year celebration on June eleventh at the high school, and it's gonna be a reverse parade format. Next year's rosters are being drafted and reviewed. In fact, they're almost done. We held a kindergarten, incoming kindergarten Zoom meeting, just like Saxon's River did, and had about the same attendance rate. That Zoom meeting was recorded, and I'm just trying to figure out the best way to get that back out to the families that couldn't attend, but we've got plenty of time on that. The tricky part about that meeting was that all the information I provided was about if we had a regular opening to kindergarten, which doesn't look likely, so it wasn't very informative in that regard, unfortunately. Survey is out to our parents regarding summer school, and the early returns on that are a little bit surprising. I'm finding that more parents are interested in summer school in a remote format than I ever would have expected. I'll have those hopefully all back by the next two days or so. I'll take a good look at that, but what I have so far really was kind of a shock. I too have some answers to the two questions that, there were two questions posed to us. One was about what our powers are doing these days. And in addition to what Laura shared with you, paras are doing a lot of collaborating with the classroom teachers. They're also supporting students one-on-one. They're connecting with families that are having trouble staying connected with us. And they raise their hand for everything and anything, and don't hesitate to go out into the community and serve meals, deliver things, you name it. They've been doing it. They also have a very involved online professional development course that they're all involved in. It's gonna be a total of, I believe, over forty hours of online work coming up in the next two weeks, so that's a, that's a really demanding haul to try to, to try to pull off. In terms of assessments, that, you know, very much the same challenges that Laura and Karen mentioned, we're finding that the one-to-one interactions are the most valuable. And yes, we're gonna see a slide that's been predicted nationwide, and that conversation really hasn't, you know, hasn't taken place on a national scale yet, what we're going to do, but that, that's a, that's a hugely critical question. Once we figure out how to get back in the buildings is what do we do with students when you have such a, you know, high percentage that, from a, if you, if you, you know, use a testing measure, you know, may not be ready for the next year. I will tell you from experience, this happened in Texas back in the days when George Bush was governor. And he set the bar high, and actually his laws became No Child Left Behind, and it nearly crippled the Texas system, because when they tested their students and found that forty percent of their kids needed to be held back based on their measurement system, they had to reconsider their entire plan. And unfortunately, then that later became the national plan. But that's, that's gonna be something that's gonna have to be discussed at a national level and a state level. But, and that's, and that's, that's a huge concern of mine for sure. So. Do you have any questions? Yep, Jason?
Terry?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Namish, I, I agree with you on the, what the paras are doing. I, I'm married to one for twenty-six glorious years. And she's been doing that, that online course for forty hours, and it's, it's, it's not easy. And, you know, I definitely, you know, I try to be partial, but, you know, she has been working very hard and, you know, doing, doing a lot of good things, so you know, that, that's a testament to you and your leadership as well, so, you know, good job on your part.
Well, I feel for her, because that's a huge challenge, and so, tell her to hang in there.
No problem.
Priscilla, but before you go, Ricky Adams, if you're out there, can you tell people why there's not a chat window today? I've had a couple people private message me and say, there's no chat window.
I don't know. I just looked when you said that, and I don't see one either.
Okay.
I apologize for that. We'll look right into that.
Okay, thank you. Priscilla?
I think that we are extremely lucky that we have the remote system that we do. We have the pairs that are supporting this and going out one-to-one, the teachers who are outstanding and amazing, and all the way up to our superintendent. But I know that we had lived in Germany when my children were little, and my landlady had been during the wartime without schooling for a couple years, and it never caught up. So we are absolutely blessed to at least have the computer system that we do have, and I applaud everyone for using that and what they're doing. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Namish?
Thank you, everybody.
Business office financial reports.
I know Teresa is here with us tonight, so I'm gonna unmute her so she can talk a little bit about the financials for this month. I know you had them. That's your second meeting. You have two meetings a month, but I wanted to bring her in today because she is boots on the ground working on it, so. Teresa, do you wanna?
Sure. At this point, we're just, well, at this point, I'm doing a lot of catch-up, because clearly not only the COVID thing, but based on a lot of things that have happened this year, so there's things that were, you know, I'm still trying to get straightened out, because we're coming to the end of the year. But as far as the Rockingham budget at this one given time, most of the revenues are in. We've got the last invoice that went to the town to collect the last amount there, a final payment. All the other spending money is in our tuition that comes from Union Elementary. We did get the payment. It's posted, though, for today and everything else. So you won't, you won't see that necessarily on the May, because the reports that you have for the revenue ended as of May thirty-first. So that's four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars right there, also added to that. As far as the expenditures go, there's still, for the most part, you know, it's about seven hundred forty thousand unspent, per se. But we still have certain assessments that we will still go back and do, which with the workers' comp will be a bill-back substitutes, because we moved all substitutes to being paid from the SU instead of them getting, you know, four different checks for half a day here, half a day there. And it's also a nightmare at the end, and it's a much easier to be able to track them for the location that they subbed in, and then bill it back that way. And the end, and it really makes it even much better for the employee themselves, the substitute. We still have seventeen thousand going out for the after-school program. That's gotta be billed out to the SU, because that's where all the program revenue and expenditures are done on the special revenues this year. We have certain, of course, utility expenditures. So all in all, and forgive me that I, I had intended on going back to my house where I had a file on my flash drive that gave a little better breakdown, too, on what we anticipated in the cash flow and stuff, but I had troubles with getting the report, so I ended up still stuck here at the office and didn't make it back there to be able to provide you with that. It's something that I can certainly provide, you know, after the fact. I think for the most part, that's pretty much where we're at for, for the financials for this, but we're just basically working on wrapping up a lot of the loose ends.
Questions out there? Priscilla?
Yeah, that report still is not showing, you know, giving hardly any detail in it, which is what we were kind of trying to get at and look at more. I'm seeing the expenditures coming up. We didn't get these in advance, so it's hard to, you know, quickly do that. My question earlier was going to be, that I referred to, and Teresa can answer it, Mr. Pratt, instead of you, on the pre-case spending that's, that's in there, and I did see a, like a ongoing thing in a budget. In the last warrant, it totaled thirty-six thousand seventy-seven dollars. And those programs are still ongoing, or are we just committed and we have to pay them anyway? Because I'm not sure, are the children going to that? That's Montessori School, Springfield Midcare, Rattleboro, Early Ed, and Hill House is what I got off the warrant.
I would have to go back and pull that particular invoice myself to actually look at that. I do know that you're right, that those thirty-six thousand and everything else, and a lot of times we're paying after the fact, the, the third quarter or something like that, because of the fact that we need to know that the students and, you know, the kids attended for that particular quarter, and we get the headcount and everything else before we make that payment.
Okay, yeah, if you could check on that for us, I'd really appreciate that. Yeah. And I think I sent a couple other questions to Marlene based on the warrant, too, that I'm sure she'll answer and get back to me, and or you can look at, because it's went to her, because she's the one that sent it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and as far as, you know, I've been working with the software company off and on, and this is why a couple things that you're seeing, some of these reports, that I keep kind of giving you report options, I wanna say, because when I get the feedback that says, well, this one's not really what they really want, this particular report here is a detailed report that was, in fact, Springfield's using this. Not this particular report, they're using the one that I provided for the SU the other day. It's more of a, it's actually labeled for school board meetings. But that's what they've been providing, so it's, it's actually a very truncated, but this time around, based on the feedback and everything else from Superintendent Pratt, I found the report that mimicked one that was similar to an example that I was given. They're two different software, so I can't go mimic that particular report, but I can continue to work with the software company. And, and this one, though, I, I thought was very good because of the fact that you are getting everything by the function codes and everything else. You're, you're getting the actual, you know, the salaries lumped together, the benefits. I mean, if you, there's not much more detailed to get. There's really no other detail to get, other than seeing every single, the repeat of the budget unit codes repeating itself down the line, and they didn't do that. They just repeat, you know, continue with the account code, but you're seeing the descriptions, subtotals, and everything else. I, I mean, I can.
So Teresa, I think that Mr. Pratt just put your, your reports in, in an email to us all, so I think that maybe the rest of the board members should take some time and look at those, and, and maybe for the next meeting, we can get some feedback on as to what they might like to see differently in a report, or if there's different. I think there is a lot of detail there, and I think that with the report that everyone has in their inbox, they should look at that, take the time to re-review that and see if what, what we're, they're looking for is in there, or if we, if we want something a little bit different.
Okay, absolutely. Yep, because like I said, we're steady working, I mean, over the last month. And in fact, this report that you're viewing now, I only got this on May twenty-seventh. And, and it was something, like I said, Springfield had been using Rick over there, and I'm like, oh, that looks really nice. Can we have that? So it's some of those, so if we can get, if I can get feedback and there is something that we need to tweak, you know, it's ideal that we can continue to work with the software company on this.
Yep, Priscilla, I'm gonna let George go first this time. George?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's kind of hard for us to expect something on the first of the month. It doesn't really give you much time, so I was gonna suggest maybe on our first Monday of the month meetings, maybe just a verbal how things looking, and then for the third Monday of the month, have the report well ahead of time, so that we can review it, to discuss it.
That sounds good, George. If everybody wants to read this and let me know before our next meeting, like a week or so before our next meeting, so I can let Chris and Teresa know if the report, if this style report works, or if you'd like to see something different, then I'll ask them to change that up. Priscilla?
That's what I was gonna say, was I thank you for sending that, because that's what I was gonna ask for, but also, that said expenditures, do you also have the revenues in the same?
They're both in the inbox.
Okay, thank you.
And, and to speak on the revenue, you have that in the format that just came out of the regular report screen, because there was a coding thing that with the revenue side, when I ran that, I wanted to duplicate a number, but I actually, again, worked with the software company this afternoon, and, and while we were on this call, she actually emailed me and said, okay, something's duplicated, this is how you fix it. So I went and fixed it. And so now I can provide the same revenue in that same format with the little green lines, and it's better than, you know, so it looks pretty good. So next time around, that will be in the same format, if, if that's what you want.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Taylor?
Rick, I'd just like to add that Teresa's been very her, her time that she spent on listening to my several and many, many requests in regards to trying to make things more user-friendly for the boards and trying to find ways to report, so I wanted to thank her for all the time, because I do send quite a few emails to her in regards to the stuff that's being requested, so I just wanted to publicly thank her.
Thanks. I think we'd all like to thank her. We know she's had a big, tough task the last six months to a year. There, there's the rest of the world may not have noticed, but as a board member, I've noticed them improvements and how much smoother things seem to be flowing up there these days, so hopefully we can keep on that forward trend. Any other questions? Feedback? WNESU Board, that meeting is Wednesday, correct? No, we have a negotiations meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, I think the twenty meeting.
So there's not really anything to report on the board, no committee meetings, unfinished business for discussion or action, so eight A, the stipend discussion ended up there. That was a bit of an error, but I'm going to throw out to the rest of the board that I think the place for that discussion to have next is at our budget meetings. And if we want to not include stipends for board members in the budget meeting, can be part of a budget discussion. In the meantime, you know, Mr. Terry made a very honorable proposal that people, you know, donate their stipends. I don't know if we can actually turn them down. We, I don't know. I don't know how all that payroll stuff works, but he made a very honorable note, note, mention to that we could donate our stipends if we so choose. If board members choose to donate their stipend, I'd like to recommend that we do it to the Rockingham Schools and, and their programs, where it can, our taxpayers and, and their programs, um, where it can, our taxpayer dollars can directly go back into, into our schools. Um, if anybody really has anything they'd like to say about that, um, I will listen, but I think we can move on from that for now. Hearing nothing. End of school update. I feel like you pretty much covered that earlier, Mr. Pratt, but.
Yeah, I think Rick, right now we just, I'm just waiting to hear from the Secretary of Education to see if it's gonna be posted for the seventeenth. And, um, you know, you know, and that was one of the reasons why I decided, you know, last minute changes that we should just keep the end of the year celebrations the same, because I didn't want to put the, uh, students and the teachers and the administration a last minute scramble to kind of move things up. So the being certain, we just kept it the same, but we're just gonna have to wait and see what the Secretary of Education says. So as soon as I know, I'm gonna let everybody know within the same few minutes that I find out, because I think it's very important, um, for everyone. It's not something I'm gonna hang on to. So stay tuned.
So one thing I want to throw out there, Ms. Bukowski, what time is your, your moving up ceremony this year?
It is at five o'clock.
At five o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if we could, how we could pull it all off, but I would like the, since this is such unusual times, I was wondering if the board would like to consider us all attending the moving up ceremony and, and maybe figure a way to socially distance our meeting afterwards in an appropriate way? If, um, if folks are interested, I will work with Mr. Pratt and others to see how we can somehow coordinate that and organize that. I think it would be a nice gesture to our students to have us show up and, and our, and our teachers and staff to, to at least show up and sit in our car somewhere, you know, as, as board members to thank them for all they've been through in the last two and a half, three months. Um, so let's, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, Karen, I was wondering if you could just send an invite to all the board members and CC me, just so they have it in their box as a reminder.
Yes, I, um, will, I'll include the board members on an email to the parents that I'm sending out, um, this week with updates, et cetera. And then there will be also, um, something a little bit more formal going out next week.
Okay. And I, you know, I don't, I know the buildings are still closed. I don't, and, you know, groups of, I believe today it's up to groups of twenty-five. So if we could find a space where we could socially distance, you know, an auditorium or even at the SU office and, um, I think we could maybe have a, you know, have kind of a, at least some sort of an in-person brief board meeting afterwards.
Ceremony is in the high school parking lot, and if we're allowing one car per, um, family, and so anticipating that and staff cars, et cetera, um, we're talking probably in excess of a hundred cars. So there could be a little bit of a traffic jam getting out.
Okay. Well, um, if, if anyone is interested, we can maybe, we can discuss it later. Um, I think that this is probably something that we can discuss via email without violating any open meeting laws of, you know, just trying to coordinate a little get together and, and any ideas on how we, we as a board could at least acknowledge the moving up of our kids this year. Um, so any thoughts, any thoughts, any discussion on that? Any opposition to that? If not, Priscilla?
Trying to get unmuted here. Um, I think that we should be there really, uh, as board members. I know the board members always attend the high school ones, and I really think that we should be there. Uh, we've already got two of our members, so it's only adding three more members. Um, so possibly three more cars, um, and be there visually for the students. I'd like to.
I have an adventure motorcycle. I can ride through the field quite easily. Um, okay, let's, we can consider that. Twenty-twenty-one school year planning, does, I don't know that there's really much to talk about there. Everything is still up in the air. Um, you know, I think your, your survey was a good start today to get an idea of how people are gonna feel. Um, I don't know if you have anything more, Chris, or if any board members have any questions or discussions about next year. It's, I'm leaving it on the agenda myself because it is a really big question in the world is like what's gonna happen next year, so.
Yeah, I, I just responded to George real quick. George, I put a comment at the very end, so people have access to that in the survey. So it's, it's there now, there's a box for comments.
Thank you. Priscilla?
I think I sent the news article to the, the news thing anyway, captioned to the board last Friday when it was announced, the governor spoke about it at his news conference, and then it was on my news thing at night, that night, about how they really seriously believe that it does not, it's not shared by the children and it's not the children that are doing it. It comes from adults in the family down. Now, on top of that, Korea had that same experience because they started to open and then they closed back up because of a, of a bunch of the parents having, uh, testing positive in COVID nineteen. So we'll have to watch for that. We do have today zero in the hospital for it again, several times this month. And there are only, let me look, sixteen that are under investigation, which is really low. We've lost one person in the last two weeks and only three people in the last four weeks in Vermont. So we are really lucky and we should be, consider ourselves blessed to be in such an environment and with people being so careful. And so that's why I'm really hopeful that we will be able to go forward, but time will tell.
Rick, could I just add, just if people want to aware is that, people have to understand is that, um, it's, it, it, you know, and I know all the board members understand this, but I'm just make sure is that, um, the governor, how it works is that the government makes a decision and says, we're gonna do this. And then he, um, says, okay, Secretary of Education, um, this is what I want, make it happen. And then the Secretary of Education say, okay, this is what I want, superintendents, make it happen. So I, you know, I just, you know, is that we're, we're all in the same waiting pool in regards to, um, you know, the governor make a decision, it kind of starts rolling down hill and bottom of that hill. Um, but it's, it's definitely not a decision that superintendents make on their own in regards to when the, when the schools open back up. I know I've had some few emails asking me why I just don't open up the school, so I just wanted to let them know is it's not that easy. It's not my decision. It's, it comes from the very top. Um, and when that decision is made, we just want to be ready to have that plan. And that's why, um, first of probably a few surveys are going out to make sure that we're meeting the needs as, as many people as possible. So thank you, everybody.
Could I just make a comment?
Sure.
Um, in regards to what you just said, uh, Chris, I, I think it's pretty premature to make any decisions right now. That's an awful long ways away. Um, that being said, um, I'm pretty darn close to all in on moving towards, uh, some form of normalcy. So, um, any type of optimism in that, um, direction. Real, reality or not, that's, that's where my mind's at. Just wanna put that out there.
And I, and I just want to throw out there, Chris, that I think it's, um, you know, for some of the people who are, are suggesting that we should just, you know, we should just go ahead and open, it is, we are putting our funding at risk with the state, you know, like the state saying you do this and there is kind of a or else, and if, you know, if we go against the state's recommendations, then there, there are very likely consequences other than just, you know, bad, bad boys, you shouldn't have done that, correct? I don't speak ASL, dude.
I, I was, I was trying to find my mute. Yeah, that's correct. Um, if I do anything that goes against the governor or anything like that, then I'd lose my license. So, and I'm not willing to do that. I just have to be patient like everybody else.
Well, you, you, you lose your license, but also what about like, you know, funding and other things that we could lose?
Millions of dollars in, in funds from the feds and the state, millions. So just have to be patient as much as we don't want to be.
Mr. Terry, I saw your picture, so some, I assume that means you might have something to say?
No, I'm good. I, I agree with George. I would like to get back to some normalcy. And, um, you know, I'm looking forward to opening it back up.
Okay. Um, Priscilla?
Let me also comment too, that I, that's mine, and I appreciate George so much for saying that. Um, the governor has said that he really wants them to open, so I think he will, if at all possible, have them open. Thanks.
If we don't, my wife and kid might kill each other. Um, board goals discussion. So we approved our board goals last, last week, and one of the things we talked about wanting to, was to make sure we did it just approve them and then put them in a box and not think about them. So I've been looking at them and thinking about them. Um, continuously, our first one is continuously improve student achievement. That may be something we really want to think about in the next, next little while. Um, especially with what Mr. Nemlich and everyone is saying about the, the possible falling behind that we may have. If we, if we read our goal, our action items for this, um, you know, endorsing and supporting the hiring of passionate educators that embrace the values of the WNESU, supporting high-quality professional development for all Rockingham teachers and staff by supporting and meeting the needs of all kids, replacement children or students at all levels and all areas. So I would like to ask our administration and our board members to, to think about how we can work towards this and prepare a little bit more for this in the next couple of months with the anticipation of school opening, you know, what, what do we need to do to like, you know, that should be our, that's our main mission anyways, but what do we need to do to like really move that, that particular goal forward? Um, the next goal, you know, then our next goal is about community involvement. Surprisingly to myself, I was disappointed to see that right now we've maxed out at about fourteen people on this Zoom meeting. Um, you know, and, and, and how do we get, it's always been, as long as I've been a board member, most of you are fairly new. The only time that we really get community in our board meetings is when there's some, something that people are unhappy about, and it's usually less community than it is, um, teachers and, and support staff. So that, you know, that's another question that I have, you know, about our, our goals that, you know, how do we, how do we get the community involved? How do we get them to understand, you know, that what's, what's going on in our, at this level of our school system? George?
Yeah, just real quick, I, I know that, um, um, a lot of people, especially now that everybody's home, right, still are watching, um, on Fact TV or, you know, on, online or whatnot. Um, I know personally is several people who are doing that regularly, more regularly now than they were before. So I think it, maybe it's just the circumstances, but I think more people are than, than in the past. Um, but, um, continuing that somehow would be good.
And how do we know, you know, how do we, is there some way to, like, the Nielsen ratings or something? So we kind of get an idea of how many people are watching and how do we, you know, how do we engage them? So so unless anybody wants to spend a lot more time, I just, you know, I wanted to at least make some note of our board goals since we did approve them and, and kind of keeps some discussion and some thought as to how we can, how we can use them going forward. You know, number three is insurance, ensure safe and healthy environment for all our staff and students. And I think that's something that we should, we'll be really paying attention to in the next couple of months as, as schools start to open. Priscilla?
Um, in keeping with that number one, and one, three, goal one, number three, and with that, ensuring the safe and healthy environment and planning for a fall thing of three levels, the normal, normal way we were doing school, the, um, total closure, the opposite side, and the, um, partial that, uh, Mr. Pettis has told us that he is going to plan for. Um, it, does that also include looking at the number of pairs that are needed for each one of those scenarios? Because that could differ and being able to be prepared to, um, if we need some back, which thirty, thirty-six seems like we probably would, if it's normal that you're looking at that to come up with the numbers that we might need.
Yeah, um, that, you know, it's a good question, and I think at this point, it's gone on a lot longer than any of us anticipated it would, and we still don't know when we're gonna be back. But we also know the longer that we are, that we're out, that we're seeing now, and, you know, you heard from the principals earlier in regards to, is that it's not replacing the learning we have. And if it continues to go on, yes, we're going to have to, um, based on the plan we come up with and the students' needs, we're gonna have to look at how many pairs, um, will be asked back. But we can't make that decision until we even know when we're gonna be back in the schools. So we have to remain fluid with that situation and make the decisions, um, when the other decisions are made, um, to, you know, how many, what that was like. So it's definitely something we have to keep an open mind in, in regards to, um, meeting these students' needs when they come back. As I said initially, I don't think any of us thought that it was gonna go on for as long as it has, might continue. So, um, once we're brought out of this remote learning, then you have, we're gonna have to, um, reassess and see what the needs of the students are.
Priscilla?
But you are making that plan that for all three levels, so that you have some ideas, so that if we don't have as much notice as we want, or, I mean, the greater notice that we have for pairs, the better. So if you've made that plan and the governor says, open, you know, we, we are open, you would be able to call back any that, that you had assessed would be needed at that point, right?
I think when we come up with a plan, right now, we're looking at two different plans. Um, before was the three, you know, under current situation, we're looking at, you know, if all kids were gonna come back to the schools and the schools would be open fully, and then a hybrid. Well, after, you know, talking amongst, you know, superintendents pretty much, in the state pretty much said, you know, it's, it's gonna be, if kids are back, there's gonna have to be a hybrid option, because some families aren't gonna feel comfortable having their kids come back. So it has to be a hybrid option. So right now, what we're really looking at is that, what does that hybrid option look like? Because there are so many different levels to, to that based on when you're having the same amount of teachers and saying, okay, we're gonna teach class, but we're also have to offer the hybrid what we're doing now. How is that gonna work? Because we don't have the certified teachers to be doing both at the same time. Can't expect an elementary kid or any student to sit in front of the computer and watch his class online for six hours a day. So there are so many different levels at this point that, um, you know, that's one of the things we'll look at. What does, um, the, you know, teacher and how, what does it look like right now? You know, I, I couldn't tell you, even if the plan was in place and we said, yes, this is how it's gonna be, it's gonna A B day, and we're gonna have the hybrid and the kids in the building. I, right now, you know, even if we had that plan in place, I couldn't tell you what that looks like for the needs of faculties and pairs and everything else, because there's so many anomalies to any of those plans, but it's just something that we need to look at. And being as proactive as we can without having the information that we, we need from the state is finding it very difficult for, for any of us.
Do we have to offer a hybrid? If the, if the government, if, if the state and the governor says schools can open, do we have to, and I mean, I, I totally understand that some people are gonna be uncomfortable sending their kids to school, but to, you know, to help contain costs and you know, keep structure and keep everybody somewhat, try to keep our, our teachers, principals, you somewhat sane, you know, there, is there, is there a requirement to offer the hybrid? Jason, you can.
Yeah, right. Not really a requirement of, of anything, Rick. I think based on what I'm hearing is that most likely they'll say we have, we'll have to offer some kind of hybrid because, um, because of it's a, it's a pandemic and we have to have a plan in place that's gonna meet the needs of all learners. It has to be equitable. And by saying the schools are open, either come or you, or don't come. I don't, you know, in the state of Vermont, I don't think that would, um, go over too big. And so I, I do think, you know, without anything being directly saying this is what you have to do right now, I, I think that, I don't think this, I don't see the state saying, no, you don't have to order, you know, offer a hybrid situation. I think that's gonna be, I, some sort of direction, that'll be part of it. But the only other option, you know, you could tell is like, you know, you know, you know, other people would say, if you talk to them, you know, I've heard the thing, okay, if they don't want to come back to schools and just have them homeschool their child. I think in other circumstances, you know, that would be the case, but with a pandemic unlike this that we've never seen, you know, I don't think hybrid would, um, not be an option based on, you know, equitable opportunities for education and learning. So.
Okay. Jason, you had your hand up?
Yep, I did. Thank you. Um, so, uh, I want to make sure I say this correctly and it comes across correctly. I, I think that you're in a tough situation in my experience over the years. I, I think that you're in a tough situation and my experience over the years is that if you offer several different options. It's, um, you're going to almost have too many choices and you obviously got to have more than one or two options, but it's just. We, we know how people are and you're not going to make, you're not going to make everyone happy, no matter what you do. So I'm sure you guys are, you know, in a room somewhere just thinking up stuff to, to improve on, so. You know, just, just stay the course, you know, you're never going to make everyone happy, come up with a couple of different options. And that's just my opinion and based on my years of experience with, uh, people, um, so, uh, you know. Good luck.
It's been my experience just having one kid is like, what do you want for dinner? Here's three things, forget it, you're just going to have hot dogs. Not giving you any more options, you can't decide, George?
Uh, I, I just want to point out that. It's been said, we know that right now online learning is not equitable. Um, when compared to in the classroom learning. So. I know I keep hearing it's not, you know, your administration's decision, but the hybrid model. If we're saying that it's not equitable now, then how could it be equitable then? I'd be more of an all or nothing and of course, you already know that. I'd be voting for all.
Yeah, and, and it's going to be an interesting conversation as we get closer and closer to see what the state, um, kind of passes down to superintendents. Like I said. They, I mean, based on what I'm hearing, I'd find, find it. Had to believe that they wouldn't say we have to offer some kind of a hybrid. You know, like I said, I mean, it would be great if we, we only had, you know, okay, schools will go, back open. Come on in, we're going to do that, um, but you know, I, with all the conversations and being around a lot of tables, I don't see that, I think it's going to have to be. You know, some sort of hybrid, no, it's not, it's not equitable, but it's more equitable doing nothing. So, I mean, less is more, I think, but. Um, like Jason said, everyone's going to want their own kind of learning plan. It's just, um, trying to create a plan, not really having any details right now is very difficult, but. Um, it does help talking and having these discussions in regards to, um, where everyone's coming from.
All right.
Sorry, I, just like Chris, when you, when you talk about that and George, when you talk about that, it reminds me of one other thing is that. I don't want to forget the extracurriculars, um, this is a football town and, um, you know. You learn a lot by being on a football field or practice. Uh, practice is a classroom and you learn a lot, uh, you know, from the classroom of sports. And that also includes band and, um, you know, Mr. Ronald does a fantastic job of band. And all the extra, all the other extracurriculars, so those are all classrooms as well, so. And, uh, you know, tho- those are, uh, those are needed, uh, as well, so, thank you.
George?
I'll, I'll pass on my comment for right now, thanks. Priscilla?
Yes, I, I'm still like, uh, George and Jason. Thinking that hopefully we are open because there is so much more that students get when, when they're open. And I think doing either you come or you homeschool. Homeschool is also available in the districts for football, um, band, et cetera, for any homeschool kids and they can send theirs to those. But you, they will get more if they're totally homeschooled and the pressure is put on them for homeschooling. Then if we try to do the technology and then we're compared that we're not giving them equal. Education, which is what's going to happen because we've just said it's not equal. So if we can try to think positive at least and have a plan for going back to school. I think that, that is crucial at this point, it'd be better to have it. And not be able to do it than to not have it in, you know, as one of our total options ready to go. And I really think that that should be it, we either have the whole, the. In school with the homeschooling or, you know, I don't think, or the distant, total distance, which I'm not. Thinking is going to be the, the option at all.
I'd rather the hybrid than the total distance myself, but. George?
I, I think the opposite, I actually agree exactly with what Priscilla just said, that's what I've been hemming and hawing about over here.
I think that. One or the other?
Yeah, that's just my opinion, I don't, it doesn't hold a lot, I know it's administrative, um, decision making. Again, we just said, we've said it over and over, it's not equitable and there's no way that it could be, so. You know, if, if, hang on, hang on, if the government says right now you can't go to school because it's not safe. And everybody is abiding by that, then if the government says it is safe, then that's what should be abided by, just my opinion, not of any.
Well, I think, I think that what Mr. Pratt was saying is that it's, that it may be the government that says. You need to offer a hybrid option. If, if the government doesn't say you need to have, have a hybrid option, then I think then we'll, we would be able to have some input into that. Into that as, you know, the, the board would actually have some, but if the government says the schools are open. You had, you know, because it's very, it's quite possible they might step in and. And, and force that upon us.
What I'm saying is that that would cripple our education and. Students would be left behind, you're going to see students left behind now, that's my opinion. And even though these guys are doing amazing, don't get me wrong, you guys are doing the, a great job, I think I really believe that. But there's kids out there that are not getting what they would be in a classroom, so there's absolutely no way the kids. Would not be left behind, um, in a situation of hybrid learning, again, just my opinion.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, this is all good conversation and it's, you know, you, you know, I, it's go. It's nice to hear where the board members are coming from, but, um, I said before, it's. It's tough because it is a governor's decision and a, you know, Secretary of Education's decision and, you know, I'm going to go with, you know. What they say, if they say schools are open, come back, then yeah, we're going to, we're going to open up and we're going to have, that's our plan. They say, no, you're back, schools are open, but you have to have a hybrid. It's not, it's, you know, we don't agree with it because we're already finding a lot of the stuff, but, you know, I have to have that plan in place too. But the bottom line, we will have a plan in place, ready to go when that decision is made.
And I, and you know, and as, as, as a, as a parent, I would prefer a hybrid than a distant learning. Because I'd like to see my kid at least in the school with, with the teachers. Some period of the time because I think that he's more success, because I think at least my kid is more successful there as a school board member. I would rather see, if the school's open, the school's open, get your kid to school. So, George, you were, you had your hand up again?
I just wanted to point out that I understand fully that, uh, your hands are kind of tied and I, I. I understand that, I'm just voicing my feelings on the subject and, um, it's no, you know, not, not pointing anything at anybody. That's just my feelings and I, and I understand where your situation is.
And, and as we get closer and things get further, you know, we do have, we do, we, we can seek legal advice. And I'm sure other school districts will probably be seeking legal advice on different things that they can do. You know, like Mr. Pratt noted before, you know, he's at risk of losing his license as a, as a superintendent. You know, and, and as we get closer and things, if the, if the board decides they want to take different action than what is going on, then we can. We can seek legal advice on what we can do and what the cons, make sure that we're clear on what the consequences of. Changing that, that's, I would make sure that, I want to make clear that you guys all know that that is not out of the question is like. But, but I think before we make decisions that perhaps go against what has been mandated by the state. Then we need to be clear of what the consequences are of, of that. You know, I think right now we're, you guys can't see me, I don't have a camera, but you know, I'm making air quotes, right now we're assuming. A lot of things about what would happen if we went against that. I think Mr. Pratt's fear of losing his license is probably not an assumption, that's probably a valid fear, but you know, what else? You know, what are the other consequences?
It's like you held on, you know, you know, it's between, you know. Licensing in, in grant money, I mean, we have millions and millions of dollars in grants and usually that's what the state comes back with. But, you know, ultimately, I think when it comes down to and the state starts giving us directives and what we have to include in our plans, you know, if there's. If there's options, you know, the board's going to have to vote on and make that final decision of what you want it to look like. I can only come with you and say, these are the plans, you know, if there's options, these are your options, if there's no options, this is what we have. But ultimately, um, I like to think that, um, this is the main purpose of the board is. Is making decisions like that is, you know, this is, and so when we get to that point, it is going to be a decision I feel that the board has to make in regards to. If we have an option to come to school and I, hybrid, do you want both options? And that's going to be a collective of the boards altogether and the direction you need to go. Because it's not like we can say, okay, one district's going to do this, another district's going to do that, it's going to be an overall decision that the board's going to have to make in regards to. However, options we have, what do you want? So what would be my job to make sure you, you have the, the right tools to make that decision?
Okay. I think we beat this one pretty well unless anybody really has anything left to say. New business for discussion or action, if any, I don't see anything there. Unless anyone has anything to bring up. I don't believe there's any appointments today.
Nope, there are none.
Director's comments. Priscilla?
Um, yes, I, I really. Let me start over, I was really pleased to hear that you were polling parents and getting some answers back there. I do think though that we also need to keep in mind when we're polling that we are at one point right now. And as it moves through this, the summer and I am looking at, I look at once a day. I look at the statistics that are on the worldometer for all the states to see how they're doing as far as increasing. Cases and deaths and both of those are definitely going down. I was amazed that New York is for most days right now. Um, well below a hundred deaths when they were at, running at a, around a thousand. So we are getting to a point where hopefully we're in the right direction and hopefully at some point they also get a. Vaccine that will take care of this and will kind of alleviate us, I know people are fearful. And, and getting there and I myself, I stay home, so I, I understand totally. But I think moving in that direction and thinking about that direction as we start that. And we encourage our parents and our children to start thinking about those things, I think that will be a much more positive outcome for fall. Thank you.
Thanks, Priscilla. George?
Yeah, um, again, apologies for being late today. Also. Chris, in regards to the survey, um, it's a pretty tough job. Figuring out what parents and, uh, public wants versus what's allowed and, um, you know. It's a tough job and it's recognized. Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Nemlich, thank you for involving me in the C I P, um, discussion, though I wasn't much help or added anything to it. Um, you guys got your act together and, um, I appreciate that, Ms. Mikowski, Ms. Hazard, um, thank you guys as well.
Mr. Terry?
So, um, I, I was, uh, really pleased this weekend, I, I saw an email from one of the, uh. Board members, um, encouraging that schools be open this, uh, uh, fall. And, uh, my first impression of that board member was, uh, totally opposite, uh, that this person. Um, would not, uh, want, uh, schools to be open. And so I was shocked and encouraged and I, I was very happy. And then I saw another email from a board member that was totally opposite of my first impression of that, of that person. Uh, where, uh, I figured that board member would want schools to be open now and was totally the opposite. So, um, it just goes to show a couple of things, um, that people can be adaptable. And even if you both have strong beliefs one way, you, everyone can find some middle ground. And I think that's important going forward, uh, with opening schools and negotiations and, and all those types of things. And not, your first impression might not always be exact, so, uh, keep that in mind also. If you have, uh, first impressions of anyone else who's currently on the board, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Mr. Benson?
Yeah, sorry about that, my cat decided he wanted to get some camera time too. But, yeah, I, I had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Hazard. Over the SIP teams and she has an excellent plan in place and we went over. All that information and some of the student metrics that are going on and. No, and I'm anxious for everything to get back to normal so that we can actually proceed as. Normally as we really can in our situation, at least right now, we're all staying in direct contact pretty regularly with emails and. For Zoom meetings and. I just hope that this goes by pretty quick and things can get back to normal for everybody's best interest. So that is all, thank you.
And I'd like to thank all of my board members, the staff, the principals, the teachers, the paras, the students, everybody out there who's been. And been working through this, um. You know, I, I never imagined myself as a school board member, much less a school board chair, much less as, uh, either of those in the, in a time like this. So the, the, the world is definitely a, a wild and crazy place in my, and, and right now. I think we're starting to find our groove as a new board finally, and you know, I think it took a little bit, but I think we're starting to get there and it's nice to have. A, a nice diverse matter of opinions and, and ideas and, and people who are really involved and, and passionate. You know, I'd, I'd like to speak briefly to the stipend, I don't think, when I came on the board, I had no idea there was a stipend and I was like stunned like. What do you mean, you're going to give me money for doing this? You know, over the years, I've often joked that the, the amount of hours and time that I put into the board, it's like, you know. Nineteen seventy-four and like thirty-eight cents an hour or something maybe, but, um. It's, you know, I've, I've always been, it's something I was amazed and stunned to find out when I joined the board and it is definitely not. Any reason that I am on the board because it's just not, it's not enough for. To make it an attractive position. Um, and I've always been stunned and amazed at town meeting and I've always been in somewhat embarrassed. For that motion at town meeting and always stunned and amazed that no one ever said, seriously? You know, when we, we're looking at all this budget, so, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting topic and it's a, it's a good talk, it's a good conversation. To have going forward when we're looking, you know, when we're, when we're trying to cut costs, one of the things I say. Said it today at work when somebody was talking, we were talking about time and not money and they said, well, it's like thirty seconds. And I was like, so if it's thirty seconds twenty times a day, how much time is that? Add that up for the week and the year and you've got like, you know, a week's vacation there, buddy. It's the same thing with, you know, same thing with money, you know, it's only a hundred bucks, but if you spend a hundred bucks ten times a week, that's a thousand bucks and that can be. You know, fifty thousand bucks a year, um, so. You have to watch out for the pennies as well as the dollars. Agenda items for our next board meeting. Priscilla?
Uh, the Rockingham Audit Report.
Audit report. Teresa, we'd like, you know, if we could get the June financials, I don't think would. That would be great, or the June, the May?
Hey, yeah, May.
May refinancials and start moving towards the, the middle, middle meeting, middle of the month meeting for that, that would be great. Anyone else? We have a negotiations meeting, at least one between now and then, so I'm sure I will have an update for everyone on that. The next meeting will be June fifteenth. As of now, it's likely to be a Zoom meeting unless we figure something out for the, for the moving up ceremony, Priscilla?
Or do we want to move it to Tuesday? Somebody mentioned Tuesday might be a day, but I don't know if everybody's available for that. That way we wouldn't be pressed for the move up ceremony.
I'll, I'll see what Mr. Terry has to say and then we can have that discussion.
Just, uh, isn't, there's a town vote coming up, uh, soon, right, for stuff, I can't remember the date of that.
Town vote or there's a village vote coming up?
Yeah, there's a vote coming up.
Yeah, Minster's having a town meeting this weekend.
I think the, for some reason, I think it's the tenth is the village.
Maybe we call it a tentative date and, uh, figure it out, um, over email. Is that okay?
Tentative date?
Tentative date of June fifteenth and then we can refine it. Is there a certain time that we have to have a date, uh, locked down by, or does it have to be right now? I don't know the rules. That's what I'm asking.
I, I think we can do, I think we can do it. So it would be our regular meeting, so it wouldn't be tentative. And then we could, in, is, I think a few days before, as long as we can get a, a few days before, we could cancel it. Priscilla?
The changes to the upcoming village meeting and election are scheduled for June fifteen and sixteen, according to the paper. If that makes any difference in the, and our move up is the fifteenth, so I don't know.
I mean, if we have nothing pressing, we could skip the media, the fifteenth meeting and go move ahead to our July meeting, but.
I think we need to do that audit report. She, uh, Mr. Pratt said, you know, we should be able to have that within two weeks. So that's two weeks from today. So I'm assuming it'll at least most of it be ready or he can at least give us a, a report on it. I, I don't, I don't know what you guys' work schedules are either, whether we could do before the five o'clock move up or that would have to be pretty early though. If we were doing that, it'd have to be mid afternoon or something. Uh, if we do it after the move up, we can do it after too, but it'd have to be fairly late.
George?
I was just going to say, um, if it would be easier for folks not to be shuffling, would Wednesday be more, um, appropriate? Seems like Monday and Tuesday seem like there's town stuff going on already, right? Is there any flexibility to a different day? That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Pratt, do you know the, um, proposals for, um, class night for the high school, which was normally would be Wednesday?
You're muted, bud.
I'm just, I'm going to look on the calendar for you.
And when's graduation, the seventeenth or the eighteenth?
Thursday.
Thursday.
See.
On the football field, right?
Eighteenth student, um, let's see. What was your question again, Priscilla?
The seventeenth is normally class night with where the students get their awards and stuff.
Yeah, I believe it's still the case. We're trying to keep it as normal as possible.
And what time is that?
It's normally been about seven.
Seven o'clock.
So we could do Wednesday at five thirty and probably be done by seven. Well, that works for everyone.
Okay.
Maybe we should strip out some of the agenda or not get into deep discussions. I have, I'm not doing that sometimes if it's pressing.
If, if we want to, if we want to make sure that we are done by seven, I can do that. I, I actually found myself to be quite good at that.
Yeah, George, don't talk so much.
So, Chris, are you okay with our next meeting being the, that Wednesday at five thirty?
Yep, I will let, I'll have Sue warn it. Wednesday, June, what was that?
Seventeen.
Yes, I will, I will get that warned.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye.